McIntyre?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yep.
Mark Walnuts?
Yes.
Chris Walnuts?
Yes.
Next item is Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting was noticed on Friday, October 4th. Agenda is posted at BMO Harris Bank, Post Office, Library and City Hall.
Counsel acceptance of the agenda.
Motion to accept the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Carried. Personal appearances for non-agenda items. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on anything here, please state your name and address and have the floor.
I'd like to speak. My name is Ravi Sahank and I took over the bargain barn two years ago, 218 West Fulton Street, right behind the police station. I stepped back off the road a little bit and I wanted to put up a sign along the road on Mario's Pizza. I got permission from them and all the business owners around the area suggested that I do so. Just bargain barn with an arrow pointing at my business. I have a lot of other town customers that come into the city. They have a hard time finding it, some can't find it, and all of them are not from here, or they're not from here. And they end up leaving the city and so patronize it. So, all I'm asking is to put up a small sign with an arrow on the side of Mario's Pizza that points towards my building so my customers can find it. And I understand that it's an off-premise sign and it's hard to get. I don't want to spend $160 for the permit and then get denied because obviously I can use the money. I'm a small business owner and I wouldn't earn money if it's not a cause, you know. So, that's all I'm asking.
Thank you. We can't discuss it here, but what would be the...
variance process?
Or ordinance changes, which...
Off-premise advertising? That'd be a big ordinance change.
Right.
Yes, that would be an alternative, just to change the ordinance. So I'd be happy to meet with you at any time to talk through that process, but the only avenue available to you is that variance process that we spoke about.
Thank you. Anyone else? Move on to the minutes from September 16th. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any corrections or additions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And the minutes from September 25th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any corrections or additions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Finance committee.
Okay. Motion to approve change order number one for MJB Masonary for the Race Track Park New Shelter in the amount of $878.50.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Webb?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Mark Walnuts?
Yes.
Chris Walnuts?
Yes.
And that passes.
Motion to approve pay request number one for MJB Masonary for Race Track Park New Shelter in the amount of $6,389.70.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Webb?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Mark Walnuts?
Yes.
Chris Walnuts?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
And that passes.
Motion to approve bills and payroll list in the amount of $183,939.60.
Second.
Any discussion? There's a posit on some pallets, that's why I had this $165...
What the other balance was?
Difference from what was originally listed due to refund on pallets.
Roll call.
Webb?
Yes.
Mark Walnuts?
Yes.
Chris Walnuts?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yep.
And that passes.
Motion to approve a temporary Class B license for St. Joseph's Knights of Columbus for October 12th.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Webb?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Mark Walnuts?
Yes.
Chris Walnuts?
Yes.
And that passes.
And the motion to approve a four-year contract with assessment service. First year at $27,500, which will include a walk-through of 20 percent of the final 20 percent of the houses in the city in the final three years at $24,500 will have not no walk-throughs.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Webb?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Mark Walnuts?
Yes.
Chris Walnuts?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
And that passes.
Motion to approve contract for employee drug testing services.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Webb?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Mark Walnuts?
Yes.
Chris Walnuts?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
And that passes.
Okay. Item number seven is just information where we're going to look for bids for a new pool furnace for this to be installed before the next heating, this heating season. The one we've got's kind of about to die. Item number eight is to consider bids for, or approve bids for the basketball cart for Yaskies at $3,600.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Webb?
Yes.
Chris Walnuts?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Mark Walnuts?
Yes.
And that passes.
And motion to approve bids for a handicap cap ramp on North Main Street to Johnson Brothers for $1,540.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Webb?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Mark Walnuts?
Yes.
Chris Walnuts?
Yes.
And that's all I got.
Thank you. Anything from Parks?
Yeah. We, in our last meeting, we okayed the installation of a Frisbee golf course. Be paid for with private funding and installation be done by the Department of Public Works. And we also created a three-person committee to oversee the community gardens. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Anything from the Fire District?
Fire District adopted its budget and firemen's dinner start next month. Second.
Second.
Blood drive Thursday for... That's right. Anybody that wants to go and do that with those who are inclined. And that's all I have.
Public Works?
Public Works. Motion to approve the second reading and adopt City of Edgerton Ordinance 13-07. Amendment Chapter 19, license and permit by adding section 19.046, residential rental property registration.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Webb?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Mark Walnuts?
Yes.
Chris Walnuts?
Yes.
That passes.
And motion to approve the second reading and adopt City of Edgerton Ordinance 13-08, limiting cats and dogs.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Webb?
Yes.
Chris Walnuts?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Mark Walnuts?
Yes.
And that passes. And that's it for me. Thank you again. Next item is to consider approving the second reading and adopting City of Edgerton Ordinance 13-06, amendment to Chapter 9, traffic parking, automobile and automobile regulations, sections 9.14, miscellaneous traffic provisions. The amendment will allow buses not to use flashers when loading and unloading pupils that do not cross the street.
I'll second that.
That couldn't be a motion. That was just me reading that for you.
Well, I think, I know we already, we discussed this at the last meeting, decided how we had to handle this, correct?
That's correct.
So we have to have a motion.
I can't make the motion.
Okay. I will make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Because this we had to do to be in compliance, if I remember right.
Right.
Okay.
Motion to second. And any discussion?
It's a bad idea. Too much confusion. Some kid is going to get hit. Stop for the bus or you don't stop for the bus.
I have to agree with you, but that's, I guess, out of our control. Because it's a compliance thing, right?
Yes, to me, it stays with compliance of state statutes.
And that was my question too, you know. I wasn't...
But I agree with you.
Yeah. We have to do it to be compliant, so we really don't have a choice.
That was, when we first did the ordinance 10 years ago, whenever it was, that was why I left part of it out, because I thought it was too confusing anyways. But as the right way pointed out to me, the state statute prohibits cities from doing what we did. So we have to adopt a statute and it allows them to do that. So our hands are kind of tied on it.
It's not hard and fast throughout the city though, is it? Some places they use the red lights in the outline city areas.
It's in the residential or business district, which would be part of all of Edgerton, if not all of Edgerton. Basically, what state statute says is that if no one's crossing the street, you don't have to put the lights on. And that's really what it boils down to. And so if they're just pulling up and somebody's getting in on the right side and no one's crossing the street, they don't have to put the red lights on. And that was, their concern was that when they did that, usually when they did that, there were only a couple of places in the city because it had to do with the small bus when they picked up the handicapped students. That was, that was the most frequent prob, I won't say problem, but the most frequent situation. And sometimes it'd take a while for that student to load. And so what they ended up doing is having a big backup traffic waiting to get one student on. And that was apparently a concern of right way. But, and they were right. I mean, they pointed out, here's what the state statute says, is that you cannot, as a city prohibit or require, I guess is a better way of putting, require this bus to put the red lights on, in that situation. So you can't do it.
I can just see some kid that normally gets off the bus and does not cross the street. For some unforeseen reason, mom or dad has parked across the street in the hour. Hey Joe! And that kid zips across the street and bang, he's hit.
I'm not going to argue with you or disagree with you on that.
I think it's a bad idea.
I'm concerned about that too. But again, it's that we can express our displeasure with the state statute on it, but it is what it is.
Okay. I don't like it.
Anyone else? Roll call.
Chris Walnuts?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
No.
Mark Walnuts?
Yes.
Webb?
Yes.
And that passes. Next item is to consider the Wright County 911 agreement.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Is there any change in this from, is this an annual agreement? Any change from last year's?
I didn't do a comparison. Did you, Cindy?
I sent it to Tom.
It looks the same as the data in the past. I think this is supposed to be...
I don't know.
I left that up to you to read.
This does have a change in the...
It doesn't? Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Mark Walnuts?
Yes.
Chris Walnuts?
Yes.
Webb?
Yes.
And that passes. Next item is to discuss and consider 2014 budget involved its own packet.
I thought I would go through the highlights and then if there were any questions about any of those items, so that we could maybe address that we tried to do that this evening. These numbers aren't final. There are still some numbers, especially the levy limit in particular, because there was an error in the state's calculation of our levy limit. We would certainly not anticipate that the council would try to, this evening, reach their budget goal. But maybe a better objective is to make sure everybody understands what all the projects are, what the changes are to the budget, ask questions of the department heads that are here, and make sure you have kind of all the background information you might need to make decisions. You certainly could make changes this evening, but I would just caution you that the numbers aren't final yet. There's one other note that you may have noticed, that we didn't distribute the DPW wages throughout the budget, and they are typically distributed throughout the budget. Because we're not sure where the numbers will end up, that's a rather time-consuming task. So all of the numbers are in the bottom line, they're just not distributed. So some departments look as though they may have had a reduction, for an example, when in fact, the DPW wages just simply haven't been spread to that account. And you'll notice one of the DPW accounts is way over budget, because all of the DPW costs are still in that line item. So you just can't, don't be too, don't compare too tightly those final bottom-line numbers for each department, because we still have to distribute those numbers.
So why is it so laborious to distribute those numbers? Because there's crossover?
Well, it's, it's probably 15, 10 to 15 budget areas. I mean, there's City Hall, Police Department, Library, and probably eight different sections in the DPW department itself. Parks, Cemetery. So they're all distributed based on an analysis that's done on three-year average time, that is actually actual number of hours used in those areas. So we have a spreadsheet that does all of that, and it's, so it's as efficient as it could be. But once you type them in, and then if someone makes an alteration to something, then it's redoing all of that. So we were trying to get as efficiently to a bottom line for you as we could today. So that's, I just wanted to note to you that that was, it may look unusual, but that's why we did it that way.
Good.
So we'll make sure they get distributed once the final kind of numbers are in. So there is a reduction of $7,000 in state shared revenue, primarily actually in highway aids. The levy limit this year, as I noted, we're kind of waiting on that final number. So we're going on the assumption that it is a 1.46 percent increase in the operating levy, which equates to about $24,000. The summary budget page indicates what it would, how much you'd have to reduce, $268,530 to meet that levy limit restriction. And it's noted in, we have that capital schedule used quite regularly, which is on page four of your packet. There are some projects in there that are already assumed to be borrowed for projects. So they, if you were to say, let's not do that street project, it would not reduce the $268,000 amount that you need to reduce your budget by. So those are assumptions, which obviously you can change, but at this point, the budget does not include the cost for those two street projects. They would be borrowed for, and then they would affect future budgets when we had to repay the debt, of course.
Great, but they would not affect next year's at all?
Correct.
Correct?
Correct. So, and then there's a discussion about debt service. Debt service will increase next year. And the levy limit, I'll just kind of paraphrase how the levy limit works. The levy limit allows you to increase your operating expenditures by the percent of new growth. That's that 1.46 percent number, which is, for us, a relatively high number compared to what we've seen in recent years. And then if your debt service increases, it allows you to add that on top. And so that's why the ultimate levy increase, when you consider the increase in debt service for next year, based on past projects financing, would be 3.48 percent. So there is a kind of a distinction made in the levy limit. They don't restrict borrowing, because they are still supportive of capital projects and maintenance of infrastructure. So that's why they allow cities to increase the levy that's needed to pay for debt service. But they restrict the amount of levy increase you can have for your operating expenditures. That's kind of the objective of the levy limit. So there, I put this chart in here just as, just as a kind of give you an idea about what our current debt service looks like for the next five years. And as you can see, it's relatively flat, near $500,000 a year for '14, '15 and '16. And so the decisions you make regarding any projects that you say, well, we'd like to do this project, but we're going to borrow for it, recognizing that in '15 and '16, those, your debt service is similar to '14, but it'll be in 2014. So it will necessitate a levy increase to pay for any increased borrowing that you do in, say, this budget year. If you complete those two street projects that are in the budget, we would see in 2015 there would have to be a levy increase, because the debt service isn't declining where you could feather in your new debt service. So just as an awareness as to what kind of our debt schedule looks like, we have these three years where they are, they're consistent. So there are some statistics given here, the kind of rules of thumb, I would describe them as, for every $100,000 of projects you approve, what is the impact on the future levy? So hopefully that will be helpful in your decision-making and kind of getting it in perspective as to what it would mean. The Fire District levy, if it, Ron just handed it, the copy here. If it is similar to what it was in the earlier draft, the Fire District will not be utilizing more than the 1.46, which is kind of our operating levy increase allowed by the levy limit. And in the past, we've kind of used that as, as long as a Fire District doesn't increase their levy by more than that, if they do, then they would be taking a share of our levy. So it looks as though, from what I saw earlier, and Ron says it's similar, I haven't seen the number here yet, I haven't studied it, that it will be, it will not be something that we will have to talk with the Fire District about, because they aren't taking a portion of our levy increase.
But there, let's say they increase by 1 percent, that's separate from our 1.46?
No. Our levy, when we report our levy to the state...
It includes theirs.
It does, because we levy for them. So that's why the, kind of the equity that we have decided over the years is that if we get a 1.4, they should, they should have no more than a 1.4. Because if they take a 2, then that means ours is less than 1.4.
I see.
So we're kind of in it together, because of the way the Fire District is set up. The Library budget, there is a requested budget increase of $41,000, which is a 5.2 percent increase. That's primarily being driven by the addition of a staff position. They are including a 1.5 wage, 1.5 percent wage increase, and there are several operating accounts that are increased significantly. Health insurance and retirement and wages. The Personnel Committee recommended that the draft budget include a 3 percent combined wages and benefits, not a 3 percent wage increase, but a 3 percent combined wages and benefit increase for all regular, non-sworn officers. And so this budget does that. So when you take into account the increase in health insurance and the increase in retirement, that results in a 2.6 percent wage increase, and that is what is in your draft budget. And then the capital items, you're probably familiar with that schedule that we provide that shows kind of a summary of the capital equipment, capital projects, as well as any notable operating increases or decreases in the budget. So that's the background. So I guess we'd be happy to try to answer questions or take any direction you'd like to provide.
That furnace for the pool will actually come out, won't it?
It will.
Yeah.
That's by umbrellas right there.
$65,000 to go now to get it down.
Good work.
Yeah.
What's our timeframe on having this approved and published?
We'll have to have notice in the paper, probably the first of November, around the first of November. Do you remember the second? Anyone know the second date in November? Second meeting date, third Monday, I should say.
Trust the calendar.
For some reason, I think we need to have it to the paper the last week in October to do our two publications.
Okay. So usually it's the end of the month or first of November, we have to have the budget in a position where we know what the levy increase will be. There can still be some movement after that. But we have to put that notice in the paper 15 days before the public hearing, which is, has traditionally been the second meeting in October, in second meeting in November. If you can't make that deadline, we have a little more time, but typically we do it at a regular meeting and not a special meeting. So that's kind of where we are. So we have this meeting and our next, the regular meeting on the 21st, and then depending upon where we are, it may require a special meeting.
Question for the chief. See any grants for the speed signs this time? I think you mentioned that they didn't look like it would be too encouraging earlier when you brought them up at a previous meeting.
No, we haven't selected any grants.
Okay.
If I remember, you were looking for a plow and dump truck last year, correct? And you did not get it?
Two years ago. For the mass port, just about every year. Two years ago, it was a used one.
Okay.
And since we're talking to Tom right now, I know this won't help this year's budget, but looking at the debt service for the next two years after that, and I'd like to see streets get done, but would it hurt to hold off on Highland and Park? I see.
I'm doing Highland because Randy's going to be doing the sewer and water underneath it. Park, because it doesn't make much sense to do a dead-end street halfway.
I said, I know it doesn't help this, this year, but I can wait. I know it doesn't help with other streets down the road either, because we'd like to get at least one or two done a year, but looking at the borrowing for the next two years, the debt service, you know, three years is, 17's not a lot better.
Tom, did we approve the lawnmower last year?
One for the park.
So this would be the second one?
I tried to get one.
Or did you ask for two of them last year?
Yes.
And we gave you one?
Correct. I asked for one for the park and one for the cemetery last year, because they're on a five-year rotation.
And we have one, and we gave you one for Park?
Correct.
But not Cemetery?
Correct.
But do you have two for, how many do you have for each?
For each.
For each?
And the one that I would replace in the parks, we've already had to do some work on the motor this year to keep it going.
The, I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
The one that I would replace in the parks?
Oh, okay.
We've already had to work on the motor this year. That's why I tried to get rid of them on the five-year rotation.
How much work was then? Was it major?
It wasn't major, yeah. It was, I don't remember what the cost was, but it was, we had to do some headwork and some valve work.
Maybe having that major work will help milk it for another year. Is that a woman talking?
I like the way you think.
But, okay, so-
If her doesn't work, Candy, what do you do?
Well, yeah, but you fix it and you hope that, you know, if you have major work on it, right, that usually helps get you through another year. Depends on what it is.
Well, you're thinking of a new one, aren't you?
Not always. Just because new ones are so expensive, right? And I don't always like to get a new one, and I take that back. I like to get a new one, I don't like to pay for it. The lawnmower at the cemetery, tell me about that. So you have three at the cemetery? And how, what kind of shape are they in?
They're still in decent shape. We use them every day.
Okay.
Again, it's, it's at the, it's over five years where I'd like to get rid of them before it starts costing us money.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't know if we put anything into that this year, Steve?
We put a few parts in some of those this year, just, I mean, you always get some kind of breakage, they get a lot of use all the time, but there's, there's stuff that breaks on them just because they're, they're getting that age. So we just do what we can do with it, even in my draft.
I'd like to go back, can we go back and talk about the streets again here? Highland and Park Avenue. So the plan was to do them next year, correct? And they're the only ones on the park for next year? And that was, it's water and sewer on Highland Avenue, correct? And then just repaving Park Street? Is that what I'm understanding?
We may do some curb work up there when you get up towards the dead end.
Yeah, there's not much curb work there.
So Public Works is going to look at maybe narrowing that street, because it's a 40-foot wide street that you know where.
And that may cut down on some of the costs of reconstruction?
Future, right. It wouldn't, it would cost more for reconstruction, but maintenance-wise, in the future, it'd be cheaper.
Right, correct. I would, I'd hate to not do any streets at all myself, because there's so many of them in the city that need it, that I'd hate to skip a year. I think, I think we got to continue to do that, because I actually got a complaint again this week on Dorro Avenue on the other end. And there's so many that need to be done, I hate to cut that out. I just hate to do it.
Which I would add on to that, Chris, as you mentioned, the- Debt service for the next five years on financing on that.
Probably finance for five years, yeah.
But this really ain't, ain't even a street surface issue, it's a sewage issue, correct? It's more the sewage issue than the street surface. Obviously, you got to rip the street up to do the sewer, so I mean, then you're not necessarily letting the street go, you're letting the sewage system go.
Both, correct.
Right.
And we don't want to be, I just, we got to stay on top of it. Is there any, anything else in the budget we plan on borrowing for, for next year, besides the two-street project?
Nothing right now. That would be up to you to decide if you wish to have projects or equipment borrowed for as opposed to paying for out of the current budget.
Mm-hmm. I have a question on Racetrack Park Road. Do we know where we're at as far as the soccer field's concerned, as far as to, if they're coming up with money or have a plan to come up with money to move forward on this? I hadn't right away, so it'd be pertinent for us to, to deal with that road now.
I do not know the answer to whether, how their fundraising is going.
I haven't heard anything.
We could certainly check and find out if-
All right. I think that would be, as far as, you know, whether or not to leave that money in for that road, the Park Road, I think we really need to know where they're at. If they're, you know, if they don't really have an interest in pushing forward with it at this point, then I'm kind of leery about leaving the money in for that road this year. I know what, I mean, I know they can't do their thing if we don't do it, but if they're not pushing to, you know, stay on it to do it, then I don't feel that may be necessary this year.
We'll ask.
And on that note, are there any things, anything, including the road, that could possibly be paid for by park funds? I don't know what we have left in the park funds, but-
There are park funds available. I've been toying with that. I think it's a, I think you'd be hard-pressed to argue that any of the road relocation is needed to serve future populations, which is what those park fees are supposed to be used for. So I think that, I think it would be tough to argue, hard to defend, I guess.
So the pool furnace can be scratched from this?
Yeah, we're going to do that to share with surplus money.
As Chris stated, we're at 264.
It's 265.
265, 428.
Under police, the two speed signs, are those those electronic ones, Tom?
Yeah.
And we have, what do we have now?
We have two.
So this would be adding two or replacing the two?
Adding two.
And where would those be?
The opposite of the current one we have.
Oh, coming and going?
Right, yeah.
They'd be at the same place.
The same remain in West Fulton Street. The one sign we have right now is, you can move that along as you do, you have different locations you can put it. But giving them-
So it's, it's the ones that are stationary?
That's what these are intended to be, solar column, so they're, they're, and they don't have people around.
Because the other one is, where you attach it to the back of the vehicle and move it around?
No, it hangs on a pole.
Oh, okay.
So if we charge old batteries, it's able to come on, change the batteries, all the different. And we'll keep it, keep it going. This is just the two additional ones.
So this is, may sound like a really dumb question, so bear with me, please.
It's never a dumb question, Candy.
I can answer, but we'll try.
I'm the only female on here, so it'd be easy to laugh at.
It's intelligent, go ahead.
Yeah, right. So the purpose, obviously, the purpose is just to have the awareness of people who are driving, correct? I mean, that, hey, this is your speed.
Right.
Slow down. There's, there's no, I mean, that's, that's the main purpose of it, right?
Right, so if I want to put their speed, and it slows cars down, and a lot of comments on it, if they're effective, get yelled at once in a while, and fun, but it's slowing people from getting to the grocery store.
Yeah.
And they will get to town fast enough with the signs there. They're effective tool, I mean, they're not the end of everything, but they're effective tool coming in town. And these two are looking at, probably more solar power, so they're stationary, you can put them up, you can leave them.
Okay. And the two ballistic vests, didn't we talk earlier this year about the vests?
We bought two, we need four.
Oh, we need, okay, okay.
We have a rotation of all the offices.
Yeah, 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 that's right.
Every year, finally, bought two, two vests a year in place.
Got it. Perfect. Not that I would try to cut that, because I think those are, those are very important.
Fairly. How about that new squad car? Haven't we got a new squad car two years in a row?
Yes.
Do we generally get a new one every year?
Yep.
I'm new here, so.
There's four cars, and we're in like a four-year rotation. That's how it's been done for many years.
And the current one, the transmission is overdue, so that's a problem that we're already having this year.
So you're actually a year behind on the rotation from two years ago, and we didn't allow you to buy any, right?
Right.
I really don't think those speed, those electronic speed signs slow anybody down. It doesn't give you any more message than a black and white sign. It doesn't take pressure off the foot feed.
Well, if I were a speeder, it would slow me down. So I like them. I mean, I think it's a good awareness, but I think, you know, in retrospect, when we're talking about, is it a necessity, or is it a nice to have? So that's kind of what I'm thinking. I like them. I think they, they do, if they give you that awareness, but-
You can check your speedometer.
I agree.
They do have them.
And I always do that, and I never speak, you know, so.
Especially them two in Stoughton that flash them bright colors at you when you're going too fast.
Those to be much more eye-catching than the ones we have.
Than the same, same color, yeah, when it changes from blue and red.
I think outlets give those kind.
Yeah.
Maybe one of those instead of two of the other kind. I don't know if other people find them to be, after a while, I think they, for me, they kind of fade into the background because they don't have, they're not as in-your-face as the ones I see in other communities.
That's, that's why they flash, and this is, with the, close to grant money before, and they told us how much we could have, so that kind of limited us, but, I mean, they're, they're effective, they work, and people do slow down. They're known to be a little more so than the black and white speed signs, because people don't read those anymore. The flashing light actually catches your eye for a minute. They're, they're tool.
So Tom, what's the building inspection?
I don't know.
That's, that's the, there was a discussion at Public, Public Works Committee about improving or increasing some fees for our current building inspection service so that they can be more proactive in their building code enforcement. So there was a discussion about taking a section of the community and providing funding to allow the building inspector to review buildings from the outside and deter, you know, determine if there are code violations. It's all an effort from the conversations we had with downtown business owners who were talking about building improvements that are needed to buildings, and that, you know, we are totally reactionary. It's kind of our-
Sure.
...operation here as we react to complaints. So this is a more proactive approach to that.
And under parks, the fiber chips?
That is a full protection under the playground structures.
Okay. So how often are those replaced?
Every two years, because they break down.
So it's a safety, do you think, it's a safety now that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's Racetrack, Central, Georgia Avenue, Haynes Road, Orchard, two loads cover all those parks.
Pardon? So, since we've got your attention, can you, can we talk about the capital equipment under DPW, so the two pickup trucks?
Yes.
You're showing one as used. One would be new and one would be used, am I?
Both would be used.
Both would be used, okay. Oh, one trucks about in a trade, okay. Both would be used. So they would replace two pickup trucks you have now, which, I mean, is this two part of the five-year rotation or whatever rotation, or?
These are, the one is a 98, and the other one is a 97, I believe.
So, and you need them for?
They're falling apart.
The two you have?
Yes.
Okay. And the plow dump truck?
Well, I've got two that are over 20 years old now. And the one that I asked for a couple of years ago to get rid of is still going, but I'd like to get that out of there, because it's, it's got too long of a wheelbase for us to really plow with. So, and that's the one that's worth the most. So I'll trade that one and get a new one.
So you're thinking it's going to be 130 with the trade, right?
Yeah.
Okay, how about the back hole?
The back hole is, I'm trying to think what year that one is, 2000s.
Five.
2002, I believe. So that's 10 years old.
I have, I have a question on that. The 48, 750, is that what then the city's obligated to pay, so that don't include what the sewer department will pay towards it?
The math is, it's a $90,000 piece of equipment, less $25,000 trade-in, and then it's a 75-25 split, 75 city, 25 utility, so that's the net of all of that. You'd see a cost in the utility budget to pay for the other 25%.
And for comparison, we could have had a new one a couple of years ago for $20,000. That's how fast they depreciate.
So do we want to actually start cutting some of those things tonight and figure out how we're going to do it, or?
Entirely up to you.
Okay, so I have another question. So the gentlemen that are sitting here, do any of you utilize any of this equipment? I mean, are you the ones that are actually using this equipment?
The guys we're here from the city, they've all used it, but we follow the truck, we use the back hole. We eventually, the city just holds them in the air.
So what you are currently using, the equipment you're using now, does it hinder you from getting your work done? And I know that's separate from, it's getting older, and it could fall apart and all of that, but-
It runs fine when it runs.
Okay.
You know, there's, just here, the D.O.A. cars break down, old holes on the back hole. You'll have rain, and it'll all down there. You have, you have equipment failure, it's, it's just equipment, you know, it gets used a lot, so you're going to have breakdowns no matter what. Our snow piles, if you've ever been down to the city garage in the midst of a heavy snowfall, at some point in time, you're going to find Kevin Durkin's shop welding up a pile, welding up a truck, placing a hydraulic line. This stuff gets used a lot. I mean, you really got to get into the thick of things to know what we got down there. My truck alone blew out a rear end, we had some major work done on the mower, and I don't know how much longer the transmission or the clutch are going to last. We'll, we'll find out this winter, but the longer you hang on to this stuff, the more money you're going to have to put into it, the longer it's going to take your stuff to get done. So, and then time knows just how the stuff appreciates or depreciates, so you either trade it in when it's worth something, or run it until you can't run it no more. So that's, and that's entirely up to you, I know your job and stuff with the budget constraints, but, you know, at some point in time, you're going to have to re-bust in some equipment. This truck died right out here in front of City Hall, it had, had nothing. And then bad electrical problems with the drive-through, and it just likes to just die wherever he's at, and, and, just the way it is.
Yeah, and I guess that's what I'm trying to think through, because I, I agree, you know, you need good equipment to, to do your jobs and do it well. But we're going to be faced then with, do we get good equipment and then cut back on salaries and benefits? Or increase taxes for everybody, you know? So that's what I think we're all going to be faced with in trying to weigh, what's the best decision for us? You know, and I don't, I don't know. Is it better equipment and lower, or no increase? Or less money and higher taxes, property taxes?
I'd like to make a couple of suggestions if I could. First suggestion I say is we, we eliminate one of the two speed signs, go with one. That'll save us $5,500.
Well, I, I would say if you're going to eliminate one, eliminate them both.
Yep.
I'm not going to argue that point. I'm trying to compromise here. I'm a compromise kind of guy.
All right.
But they are not something that we need, and I have no problem taking them both though. As far as the pickup trucks, I would say get one and not the other, just get one. But as far as the plow and dump truck in the back hole, the bigger stuff like that, I hate to not get stuff like that and just let it go until it's not worth anything, to your guys' point. I mean, this is stuff that you have to have. But I think if we, we can eliminate a pickup truck and then two signs, that's how, that's a good start.
And make it a motion.
I'm going to make that a motion, to eliminate the two speed signs from the, for the police department and one of the pickup trucks for DPW.
Yeah, do it individually.
I will do that.
You might have some different thoughts on that.
Okay. Good suggestion, Mark, thank you.
Which one are you going to go with first?
I am going to go with the, eliminate the two speed signs for the police budget at $11,000.
I'll second.
Discussion. During no more discussion, roll call.
Chris Wellnuts?
Uh, yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Mark Wellnuts?
Yes.
Webb?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Takes eleven thousand dollars off.
Okay, and I'm going to make another motion that we buy just the one pickup truck and not two. Or if my math is right, that's going to save us fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars, correct?
Are they even split time?
Um, yeah, they can be. We'll see what we can get for that.
Do you have a second?
Do I have a second?
Discussion.
Yeah, Tom, do you know what, do you have trucks lined up though? You know what the prices are?
No.
Then I think, I think maybe we should give him, you know, instead of splitting it in half, give him a little bit more money if he's only going to go for the one truck. Just to make sure that, uh, he has adequate funding to, to purchase a respectable truck if he's only getting one.
Can you do some more research between now and the next meeting, Tom? Or is that something you?
Yeah, why don't you do that?
Yeah, I, I, that's, that's fair. That way you can get a little better pickup truck.
I mean, fourteen anyhow, if you're, you're only buying one, he's probably getting a break with the two. You know, if you buy it from, where did you say, Fastenal? I mean, what, to buy only one for fourteen, if you're only buying one, I don't think that that's, you're going to get a respectable truck. For fourteen? Used for a full-size pickup? Well, whatever.
Okay. Now you're just going to go just to not only order one and have researched price?
I say we get, we let him get back with us and see what he can get one for. Anyhow, I think we just go to, with one pickup truck.
Want to make that your motion, just to go with one truck without a dollar amount on it or just leave it, leave it?
That's, I would, I would prefer to leave it the way it is right now. And then, you know, we can always reconsider, correct? If he finds out that he's going to need more. Or I could, or how about I do this? I'll, I'll, how about if I make the motion that we, uh, only buy one pickup truck and we allow up to eighteen thousand dollars for the one pickup truck?
You'll have to amend the original motion.
Huh?
It's still a motion on the table, your original motion.
So can I amend my motion?
Yeah, you didn't put any dollar amount on the.
Yeah, so let's make it so we can buy one pickup truck up to eighteen thousand dollars. That should get you halfway decent one. You okay with that, Mark?
Do you have a second?
Not up to me, it's up to the second.
So was it, did Dave or did I second, did you get?
Dave.
Dave.
Dave, is that okay with your?
Yes, yes, yes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Chris Wellnuts?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Mark Wellnuts?
Yes.
Webb?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
And that passes.
Is somebody else going to do this or do I have to do this also?
Oh, I have a question before, just a second. Yeah, because I don't know how excited I am about it. Question about the backhoe. How, so if we look at the plow and the dump truck versus the backhoe, how often do you use the backhoe and what kind of shape is the backhoe in now?
Every time there's a water main break or?
Yeah, anytime there's a water main break.
You gotta dig a, some hole to bury somebody.
Anything in the street, anything.
Cemetery use after this?
It's getting used through two, two departments or basically three.
Oh, sure.
You throw the cemetery in.
What kind of shape is that in?
It's ten years old.
Okay, but what kind of shape is it in?
It's in decent shape, but it's.
So it's getting old?
Yes.
But it's in decent shape? I, no, never mind. Okay, the plow and the dump truck. So you said you have two of them that are twenty years, over twenty years old.
Correct. Third one is getting close to being twenty years.
So I would rather put some money towards, you know, to me, the plow and the dump truck. I mean, it's very important, I agree, the streets and the, um, getting all of the snow plowed. You know, even though that's a larger amount of money, that makes more sense to me than the backhoe. If you've got a backhoe that's ten years old, but it's still working good, I'd rather put my money towards the dump truck or in the plow. So I would make a motion to not, or to take the backhoe out of capital equipment. I don't know how that'll go over, but that's my motion.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Uh, I don't like the idea. I, I think if we, if we keep putting off buying the important things that we have to have, we're going to find ourselves eventually in a world of hurt. I think before we start doing things that we know we have to have to keep the city somewhat operational, we, we, we pick at some other things here. And then, and when we get to the end, perhaps we, maybe we, we allow them a little less money. But I, I, that's my thoughts. Because if you continue to cut stuff like that, it's stuff that you have to have, you know, two, three years from now, we're going to be sitting with four or five different things that we absolutely have to have and then the money not there to do it.
As much as I hate to bring this up, but we could put this in a borrowing package, both of these pieces, and it hits us next year, which gives us some options to deal with the levy limits, but it increases that debt service for next year by that much more.
Maybe we put the backhoe in and not the other one. I, I don't know that you want to put them both in, that's probably chunk of money.
But what, for the borrowing?
Yeah, you know, maybe, maybe borrow money for the backhoe and then leave the plow and dump truck in the budget.
Or why wouldn't you, um, put the plow and dump truck in for borrowing? I mean, you leave the, the two, or you leave the backhoe and, uh, pickup truck?
I think before we discuss any more of this, we need to vote on the motion on the table because that's what's got to be decided on at this point.
That's true. Well, it's still conversation.
Yeah, we're still talking about it. Right, but we need to decide. I think it'd be best to decide what the fate of the backhoe is and then decide whether or not we want to borrow for it. There's no sense in discussing borrowing for it and then have a motion that.
Well, we're discussing alternatives. We're having a very good discussion, so.
So Chris, you were, what were we saying there about that, the debt service?
It's going to increase it for every next five years.
Increase your one percent, right, for next year?
Yes.
Your levy?
For fifteen.
Yes.
And that's assuming a five-year amortization. You can take this stuff out longer, but when you start backing this stuff up, you can't do projects. Now you won't be able to do projects at all then.
Right.
Because your debt service is going to continue to get stretched out. So we, as painful as it is, we try to keep them on a five-year schedule because there's always another two hundred thousand dollars with the request next year.
Mm-hmm. That's what I'm saying, that's.
We try to.
Ramona, what's your comfort level in us putting more into the debt service?
Well, I guess if you were to take the two pieces of equipment and the two projects, two road projects, you're talking more than a five percent levy increase next year for debt service?
No, we don't want that.
That's your comfort level. Because you're the ones who will answer to that.
No, you don't. I think that, you know, and I don't understand it as well as you probably do, but I think you're pushing it at that rate.
It's likely.
We haven't had a levy increase of five percent in a long.
No, and I think, no.
What did we have last year? Wasn't it, um?
I thought, uh, three.
Three point two, wasn't it?
Three something, I don't remember.
Okay.
Zero, one, two, or something like that.
Okay, that's right.
I'm going to call the question. Motion is to.
Remove the backhoe from the budget?
Roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Uh, yes.
Mark Wellnuts?
Is this, um, are we voting on the call of the question or the actual motion?
The motion.
Do we have to do the call of the question?
You call the question and you.
We didn't get a second on the call of the question.
So we're actually voting on the motion?
That is correct.
If we can do that legally.
Yeah, there was no second on the calling the question.
I got my Robert's rules, but.
Should there be?
I believe there should be.
In the middle of a roll call now, too.
Sorry, I didn't bring mine either, Dale.
But if there's not a second on the, on the call of the question, you're going to go back to the original one. So what I heard up at the, uh, new older persons.
Well, we should be clear on what we're voting on though, I guess.
Right. That's a very good point.
Well, I thought we were voting on the motion, but.
Yeah.
An issue about, if, if there's, an issue is whether we should vote on the motion yet or if there wants to be additional discussion, then have a second and recall, call the question. But if there's, if you want to get the vote, then vote on the motion. If you want more discussion, then you won't call the question, vote on whether you want to call the question or not. If you want more discussion, then we still discuss it now. If you're done discussing it, then you can call the question and vote on the motion.
Yeah, I think we're done discussing it. Everybody done discussing it? Yeah, we're done discussing.
I just want to know what I'm voting on though. There should be clarification as well. We're voting on it, there's a call of the question.
Please, can you reread the motion?
Yeah, the motion is to remove the backhoe from the budget.
That's all there is to it.
And you're the third vote.
And we can start over just so that everyone's clear.
Okay.
If that's all right with you.
Let's do, let's do that.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Mark Wellnuts?
No.
Chris Wellnuts?
No.
Webb?
No.
McIntyre?
No.
Motion fails, two to four.
Okay, I'm going to make a, I'm going to do that, my first motion that I figured somebody else could do for me. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion before I, uh, to remove that fun umbrella from the budget for six thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Discussion. Hearing none. Motion is to remove the fun umbrella for six thousand dollars. Roll call.
Davis, or Chris Wellnuts?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Mark Wellnuts?
Yes.
Webb?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
One of these days she's not going to put that in the budget, you know what I mean? You do.
I know.
I seen five of them and I went by the day I counted them, just so you know.
The name of it.
I counted them on the way here. There's room for ten people under each one.
Mayor, I can just make a change here. Squad cars going through some of my notes in the budget on the safety committee. It's twenty-two we hear in capital equipment. But in my notes, it should be twenty-five.
Let's talk about that tomorrow because the numbers from last year, if they're consistent, we don't need twenty-five. So we'll, we'll make sure we have the right number in the budget. You and I can look over those numbers because I looked at actuals from this year and I think we'd be okay with twenty-two. That's net trade-in. That assumes, assumes a, I think, fifteen hundred dollar trade-in.
Anybody got?
So it's actually a expenditure of twenty-three, five.
I, I have one, but I ain't figured. Anybody got a dollar amount on what we've cut so far?
Eleven thousand, six, uh, twenty-two, I think, twenty-eight.
Last year we had this up on a.
I could do that next time, I guess I wasn't anticipating.
I would really.
Two hundred and thirty-three or somewhere around there?
Thirty-one, one oh two.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to make another motion again if I can. I want to make a motion that we borrow the money for the backhoe. And can I put it in the same motion that we leave the dump truck?
Make them separate motions.
Okay, the first motion then will be to, uh, borrow money for the backhoe instead of putting it in the budget.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. Motion is to borrow for the backhoe, roll call.
Chris Wellnuts?
Yes.
Mark Wellnuts?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Webb?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
And that passes.
With that being done, then I'll make a motion that we leave the plow and dump truck in the budget.
You don't need to do that, it's.
No, we don't have to because it's already on the paper. Okay, so we're good.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to eliminate under cemetery one lawnmower for ten thousand, seven ninety-nine.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Motion is to eliminate the cemetery lawnmower for ten thousand, seven ninety-nine. Roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Chris Wellnuts?
Yes.
Mark Wellnuts?
No.
Thomas?
Yes.
Webb?
No.
McIntyre?
No.
Sounds like a tie.
Tie vote.
If I don't vote, the motion fails. Still in.
Make a motion to, um, eliminate under parks one lawnmower in the amount of eleven thousand, four thirty-nine.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, make a point here on these. One thing about cutting like a lawnmower and we need to understand that it's not a critical piece of equipment like a backhoe and a plow and dump truck is if we lose one lawnmower, we can probably limp by, couldn't we? I mean, chances are if you lose, you're not going to lose it, you have to put a little money into it. But we, we need to understand it's not like a, a, a major piece of equipment that we got to have when a water main breaks. We got to have a backhoe. And when it snows, we have to have a plow. If the grass gets a little long for a day or two because we're waiting for a part, we can handle that. Not to mention there probably is a couple of pushmore's if we had to use it.
You're hired.
I push my mine every week, twice a week lately. So, I, I mean, we just got to understand that we got to, the critical stuff is what we got to be focused on, making sure we have. That's all I have to say about that.
I didn't know we were here for a lecture.
Uh, it wasn't a lecture, I was just trying to help you guys understand.
It's called influencing skills.
Yeah. Dale Carnegie.
He needs to work on the rest of them.
Uh, any, uh, further discussion?
Everything else though, just like Tom's squad cars, the more you back them up, the more it's going to cost you at some point.
Right, but it's the criticality of the piece of equipment is what I'm trying to focus on here. I mean, a squad car, that's probably a little more critical than a lawnmower. Uh, that's all I'm saying is we got to think, that's the way I feel, I think. I didn't, I ain't telling everybody else they have to think that way. But, I mean.
The, the one we eliminated, that was supposedly the cemetery, that one that gets, that was really bad one or you?
No, the one at the cemetery is in decent shape from what I understand. And that got voted, keep.
We keep them all in decent shape, but it's a matter of, they're getting past their five-year where it's going to start costing us.
Yeah, um, so I guess maybe that's it. I just keep getting stuck on getting past that five-year. And I totally understand that each year you let it go by, it's worth less than less. Um, and that should be kind of a guide pour, post. It shouldn't be an automatic, I guess, is what I'm thinking, so.
Public Works Committee could review any of the maintenance records for these vehicles. So I think you keep track of this stuff, right, Tom?
I don't know if we keep track of the mowers. We might.
Okay. That would be good information to have.
Mm-hmm. That's a good point.
And a question from Tom. How, how, how long can we hold the mower before it just doesn't work? I mean, for as trading, I mean.
And is that a problem is the question? It's a philosophical piece, just like we've had the conversation. At some point, you need to decide if you're going to drive it into the ground because it's more cost-effective, if you feel that is, or you're going to continue to trade, trade, trade. So it's, it's a philosophical and everyone has their own opinion about that. We can do some studies and look at numbers. That's why those maintenance costs are important to have, to review. So you, the committees, should be looking at those details to understand how much is this equipment actually costing us.
What's a new one cost? No trade-in.
Close to fifteen now.
Okay.
And at the end of the day, it would be nice to have the data to find out how much the older ones cost you per year to keep going, how much the newer ones cost over the same period of time.
Right.
And without that data, it's really tough to make, you know, to say one way is better than the other way.
Right. Just like the trucks and everything else. That's all should be based on it's, what it's costing you.
Mm-hmm.
So these different dollar amounts are because the trade-in value is lower on the parks one?
The difference in dollar amounts is because they're different size mowers.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? Motion is to eliminate the parks lawnmower for eleven thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars.[1773.04] Motion is to eliminate the Parks lawnmower for $11,439. Roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Chris Wellnitz?
Yes.
Mark Wellnitz?
No.
Thomas?
No.
Webb?
No.
McIntyre?
No.
Is that a no?
Yeah.
So you, motion fails, two to four. If I kept my score right here.
That's what I heard, too.
Yes, okay.
So if we wait until the next time, and we have it up there, we'll have a lot of other things we can probably see better, to see where we could cut other costs.
I'm, I'm happy to have that projected, if that would be helpful.
I, I think, at this point, we're gonna probably wanna see more of that, to know where else we can cut.
Maybe, where are we at now?
79, we've cut 79,852.
You know, we got a couple hundred thousand to go.
So, that's a good jump, a good start.
Wonder where that's gonna come from?
Obviously not a lawnmower.
We'll know next meeting about the...
Probably salary.
We can still cut them.
Oh, all right.
We ain't done yet.
It's just too early in the ballgame.
I have a question on the storm sewers here, the Rollin' Street Box Culver and the Lilac Lane Storm Sewer. The Rollin' Street, that was crossing, that was at the, what, northwest corner of the park there?
Rollin' and Street.
Box Culver.
Yeah. And so that, that's critical, that that gets done?
Yeah. Yeah.
And then, what about the Lilac Lane Storm Sewer?
That's, that's, that's wastewater money.
Stormwater money.
Doesn't help your budget, if you take it out. Doesn't help your budget?
Oh, okay.
It's funded by a different, by a utility.
Yeah, if you look at Five Merck, Stormwater Utility.
Well, either one of them are...
Yeah.
This motion that we wait until next time before we, we have more information.
I mean, could, you know, need to, when the discussion's done, then we can...
I'd like a little bit more information, please, under Library for wages and maintenance contracts. What would comprise the 41,000?
All right, well, let's start on wages. What I requested was an extra part-time staff member, a 20-hour-a-week position. The last time I came to the city asking for additional staff was in 2009. And since then, um, we haven't spoken down, we're the only library in our county to be seeing positive numbers still throughout all these years. So, kind of like a snapshot, um, our circulation has gone up over 30,000 items since 2009. Our door count is almost at 5,000 more people coming in the door. Um, computer use is up by almost 2,000 users, and our program attendance is also up about 2 percent. So, we are doing a lot more than we did even in 2009. So it's stretching us pretty thin right now, so I was asking for an additional part-time staff member.
Uh, do we have a dollar amount on what the total cost would be for that for a year? Because if I remember right, a 20-hour-a-week position gets benefits, correct?
Not anymore.
Okay, so could we have a dollar amount on what that would, would cost us?
12,000.
12.
12,500.
So when you say you're, and I, I understand that with all these additional things and, um, stuff that the library's doing, it's stretching you thin, what does that mean? Do you have people that have to work longer hours?
It is putting me in, so doing director work as being a person attending patrons coming in the door. So, a lot of strategic planning doesn't get done, um, that kind of things. Plus, we expanded our hours, we open an hour earlier, they open an hour later throughout the whole week, um, that's another thing we did this year. So, we're stretched, we're stretched pretty thin.
Okay.
Some of our desks aren't covered all the time, especially if somebody's sick or if there's a vacation, which is, in my opinion, unacceptable, especially if it's, happens to be at a desk where there needs to be supervision, just because we have those two floors. So, that's where the, the wages come in. Maintenance contracts, there's, um, there's many line items that the increase in maintenance contracts falls into. Our payment to Arrowhead Library system has gone up almost $2,000 over the past year. And then, I have included all of the things that the board normally pays for, including our IT services. The IT services alone cost $13,560 per year. Our computers are getting older, and they're seeing a lot more use, so we have the full complete care package, so if anything goes down, they're there the same day to get us back up. And the board has been paying for that. Right now, we do not have any money to replace computers yet, but that's going to be coming within the next year or two. But we wanna keep the full-fledged IT service, just to keep them running as well as they can. Um, the RFID tech service contracts have gone up, they're $4,500 a year, that's something the board has been paying for. So that's kind of a snapshot of some of the bigger line items that increased.
So when you say the board is being, has been paying for it?
Out of their memorial fund money?
And are they suggesting they not pay for it going forward?
They always wish to use those things on non-operating costs.
So this budget assumes the board does not contribute anything?
That's, yeah, that's, yes.
How many people do you generally have working at the library at any given time?
Uh, including myself, the top that we ever have is five. And that's during the summer, when it's our busiest times.
So what's the least you have?
Two. We have to have two people to open up the building.
Well, I'm gonna give it a shot, I'm gonna make a motion that we eliminate the added, uh, position to the library.
Can't.
Well, the motion in effect would be...
Oh, is it gonna go through the library board?
Well, your motion in effect would be to reduce the library budget by $12,500, if that's, and they would get to decide what they do.
Okay, let's, let's, let's put it that way, then. I will make a motion to reduce the library budget by $12,500.
I think you misunderstood when Sherry was talking, Chris, about the outstanding job this library is doing, in compared to the other libraries in the Arrowhead District.
I understand that.
And to think of eliminating, reducing staff...
Well, we're not reducing, we're just not adding. There's a difference.
Yeah, that's a reduction.
No, that's, that's not a reduction. If you're, if you're not...
Well, you don't know the whole story. There's somebody gone, and it's gotta, they gotta replace that, the hours...
Is there somebody missing? I did not hear that part.
This is an additional staff position.
Because if somebody were gone, this wouldn't be an addition.
Yeah, well, maybe, yeah. But they do need the help, they do need it. The, the, the library is doing a tremendous job.
I, I do not doubt that, I don't argue that point one bit.
And I don't think you've got...
I go in the library myself, and I always get good service in the library.
In good conscience, we cannot shortchange him.
I have a question regarding the actual hours being worked now.
No, wait a minute, we have a, we have a motion on the floor.
I don't have a second.
Don't have a second.
Right, we don't have a second.
I'll second it for discussion.
Yep.
Thank you.
Are you impressed? No, I pulled a you.
Yeah. About time. Um, regarding the employees now and the hours they work, they, they work roughly 20 hours each?
No, it's all different levels. I'm the only full-time, uh, member of my staff, which is 40 hours. Um, we have two others at 36 hours, one at 30, one at 25.
20.
One at 20, one at 11, and one at 10.
So the majority of the employees are at a point to where they get health insurance, correct?
No.
They're over 20 hours?
The, the law changed, um, when we had Act 10. It used to be if you worked more than 600 hours in a year, um, you were eligible for health insurance. With Act 10, it's now gone up to, uh, 1,200 hours. So now, someone that's hired for 20 hours a week, no longer would get health insurance, but if they were hired prior to Act 10, they would be eligible still for health insurance. So, there's been a shift in that. So, new hires at 20 hours, 'cause she's got a vacancy right now for a 20-hour person, would not get health insurance or get retirement benefits.
What's the cut, what is the number of hours?
1,200.
1,200.
1,200 is the new, the new threshold that they'd be eligible. So that's...
So equate that to a current staff, uh, 30 hours a week?
Well, half-time person would be half of 2,080 is the typical...
40.
So, 1,040 would be a 20-hour person. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I guess what I'm...
Half my staff right now have benefits because they were hired before, half right now have no benefits because they were now after.
So by, could it, is it possible to increase, um, hours of employees already there, to where we could necessarily not cut the budget as much to eliminate the ability to hire another staff member, but yet be able to increase current staff members' hours to where it ain't quite costing us what you're asking for, that it would cost to employ another person? And how would that play into the, the insurance?
Well, the, the insurances and the other benefits they get would go up. The only two that I would consider would be the 36-hour positions, because they have the most benefits right now, and so their vacation time wouldn't be a great hindrance to keep staff in the building. If we took like a 30-hour position, increased that by 10, I'd have to do a lot more trying to rework physical bodies than I would say the other two at 36. So, do you see that kind of play? As far as the money goes, um, that would be something we'd have to work out, but...
So what, what you're trying to say is if you, you increase the two 36-hour positions to 40, because they're already getting the benefits?
Right, it's somebody that was already getting benefits.
And you're, you're getting some absorption of the 20 hours a week you're after.
But they also get paid more than a person starting out at 20, 40, too.
So, here's my philosophy. You manage that group, they're your team, it's your library, we should decide how much money we can afford to keep in the budget, and you manage appropriately.
Right, and that's what I'm...
I think for us to decide...
Good point, yeah, that's, that's a good point.
What you should or shouldn't do is not our business.
And I'm, I'm not looking to decide that for her, I'm just getting, trying to get a feel from her as to what she can do, as, as far as what we do with our money.
But I would also like to, but it's her, it's her business.
I understand that. It's our business, because we're the one deciding on how much money she's getting.
Our business, no, our...
So we can help her by asking her the questions as far as the, how she can manage her money, so we can decide what not or what to give her. That's where I'm at with it.
Our business is to...
I'm not telling her what to do with it.
Our business is to decide how much money for her in her budget, and, and then she's going to have to figure out what to do, how to spend and utilize that money.
Correct.
But I would, I know there's a motion on the table for $12,500, and I, just for conversation purposes, um, I think we're getting too minute just on to that number. Because if I, if we were to take that 1,200 or 12,500, there's still almost $29,000 there that, for con, maintenance contracts and wages, that I think is an awful lot of money. So, I just think that's something to be think about, thinking about when we're voting on this, um...
Motion.
I wouldn't just single it down to 12,500, so... That's my lecture.
This is a prioritization, really, because the, the 1.46 percent increase in the operating levy that the whole city has, if it's distributed evenly across departments, not that I should say that's the way you should budget, but that's like a $5,000 increase for the library, not a $40,000 increase.
Correct.
So if, if the library is truly a higher priority than other departments, recognize that if you give more than a $5,000 increase to the library, then there will be other departments who will have less than a 1.4 percent increase in their budgets.
Absolutely.
And you should, and you, like I said, you should, you should prioritize, that is why you're here, otherwise you could just make up the numbers, but in perspective, that's a really significant increase to the cost.
Then at this point, I'll make a motion to allow the library...
There's already a motion.
I apologize.
It's okay.
On, on this motion at 12, that 12,500, Ramona, that meant that, that still left a 5 percent increase in their budget?
It means that there's still 28, almost $29,000 in, that we would be agreeing to for their wages and maintenance contracts.
It's less than a 5 percent increase, Matt, I think it was 5 percent, the 41,000 was a 5 percent increase, if I'm not mistaken?
Sure looks like it's more than that, by looking at the, if this is the, if this is the budgeted number that we dealt with last year, the 359?
Right.
For this year?
It's about 12 percent.
41 percent, or 41,000's a lot more than that.
12 percent, which is a lot.
You're right. It's almost 10, because you're almost at 400,000, this is 40 grand.
It's more than, more than 10.
Yeah, about 12.
Right, right, it's over 10, because you're al, the, the new budget's almost at 400,000.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, you're correct, it's about more like a 11 or 12 percent is what they're asking for. But the, but the dollars are what you're working with, it's 41, and if you gave them the 1.4, 1.5 percent, that's about...
All right, so can I ask a question, then, on that matter? So in a perfect world, then, we would just tell all the department heads that, uh, you get 1.4 percent of whatever, we'll figure out whatever that number is and say that, okay, you figure out what to do with that number, all, each one of them.
There are places in budget that way. I don't think it's wise.
No, right.
There are places in budget that way.
But I'm just asking hypothetically if I'm on the same page with what you're saying.
I think that's a good point. That you have to keep in mind, is that the whole city's only getting $21,000 dollar increase in operating.
Right, and I guess that's what I was trying to get to earlier, is that, you know, where do you want to spend your money? On your equipment, on your employees? I, I mean, we don't know.
You, you have, yeah.
They're both very important.
Some things are more important than others, and that's what you guys decide on. Okay, can, can I make a motion, we call a question here?
I'll second.
Okay, now there's a motion and a second on the floor to call a question. We'll vote on the motion to call the question. Roll call.
Chris Wellnitz?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mark Wellnitz?
No.
Thomas?
No.
Webb?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
So to call the question is a floor two roll call vote.
So that means we gotta vote on this.
Now we get to vote on the motion, that is correct.
Now, the motion is to cut 12,500 out of the library increase.
That. Out of the library budget.
$12,500 out of the library.
That's what I said, but we're just, okay.
Roll call.
Chris Wellnitz?
Yes.
Yes.
Mark Wellnitz?
Yes.
Thomas?
No.
Webb?
Yes.
McIntyre? Davis?
No.
4-2? Do they count?
That's what I was thinking to say, that's right.
Come back?
We can make that motion next, whenever.
Yeah, we can, we can revisit it, but yeah.
I didn't wanna focus on the 12,500.
I understand. I would like to make a motion that we call it a day and then we come back with our information up like we did last year so we can go through and start cutting deeper and have a little more information available before our eyes.
Do we need this a motion or should we just move on here?
Let's just move on.
Move the motion.
We'll just move on.
All right, fair enough.
Like a second, or withdrawing, however we wanna put that.
It was a draw, it was a race.
Guide for lack of interest.
Okay, Mayor, all the personnel and staff reports. It looks like it's gonna be interesting.
No, we didn't.
Um, there is a trivia contest this weekend, and that's all I have.
I just wanted to announce, um, we've been getting calls about trick-or-treating. Um, in the past, we've always set it for October 31st from 4:00 to 7:00. So unless there's an objection by the council, it wasn't on the agenda. But staffs, if there's no objection, staff will just let the community know.
Don't we, since it wasn't, didn't we vote on that last year? Don't we?
Two years ago we did, last year we didn't.
We have, but, you know, your next meeting's not until October 21st. So, in order to get the word out to people, if, if no one on the council objects...
That'd be okay for them to talk to it, yet we'll vote on it the next time, right? Or don't we have to?
No, we'll just, I think we just direct staff to do it.
It really doesn't need a vote from the council, so...
Keep the snowplow?
Start later, a little later, and stay out all later.
So from 3 to...
5 to 8.
We're good.
Yeah.
People are scrambling trying to get their kids home from school, parents are in the midst, it's...
Yes, yes.
I know it's daylight hours, but it's, it's hectic.
I think if we're gonna make changes, we need to then have it on an agenda.
Right.
Let's, let's put this on the next agenda for October 21st.
Yeah, that still gives them enough notice.
Not according to the people that are calling City Hall.
Exactly.
Just so you know, they will not be happy without an answer.
And we can't discuss it anymore here because we're getting a little too far involved in discussion.
Do anything with that, or everybody got a capitol, didn't they?
Yes, we copy the council on the fourth way map.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried, thank you.